I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sho.
Here.
Duco.
Here.
McIntyre.
Here. Are there any agenda deletions or corrections? All right, moving on to Agenda Item 1, the consent agenda. I have claims, A, for $536,179.29, B, minutes to approve closed session 8/19/19, regular meeting 8/20/19, work session 8/23/19, C, approve removal from payroll for Nick Reinhardt, seasonal conservation effective 8/23/19, D, approve removal from payroll for Clayton Reed's seasonal conservation effective 8/23/19, E, removal from payroll for John Wood, temporary employee, secondary roads effective 7/10/19, F, approve license application for Class C liquor license, LLC commercial for your private martiner LLC, G, approve license application for Class C liquor license LLC commercial for your private martiner LLC, H, approve First Amendment to community support contract, D, C A T 5-20-003, I, approve request for use of auditorium and first floor hallway for small business Saturday, November 30th, 2019, J, approve offer to purchase for John Francis and Bridget A. Lewis for project number B R O S - S W A P - C O 91 (1, 2, 8) (1, 2, 8) - S E 91, K, approve offer to purchase for Philip H. McCray Estate for project number B R O S - S W A P - C O 91 (1, 2, 8) (1, 2, 8) - S E 91, L, approve offer to purchase for Jacob K. and Angela Miller for project number B R O S - S W A P - C O 91 (1, 2, 8) (1, 2, 8) - S E 91, M, approve agreement between Warren County and the Iowa Department of Transportation for project number B R O S - S W A P - C O 91 (1, 2, 8) (1, 2, 8) - S E 91, N, set public hearing for October 1st, 2019 at 9:35 a.m. for road vacation on Kirkwood Street. Take a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I would move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sho.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye. Moving on to Item Number 2 of the agenda. Consider memorandum of understanding, MOU with Squaw Creek Township regarding road accessibility for Smith Cemetery with possible action. I would accept a motion to accept the MOU.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sho.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye. Item 3, consider inter-fund operating transfer with possible action. A, secondary roads. B, nutrition. C, wellness.
These are your budgeted transfers for secondary roads, which is transferred monthly based off of taxes. And then this year it's a little bit different because we have the local option sales tax. For the 100% property tax reduction, we reduce the tax collection. So we'll be transferring some of that local option sales tax funds, other funds, to secondary roads to meet that maximum amount, the $2.9 million from the secondary road from the rural basic fund. Your first resolution is for that secondary roads. The other transfers are from the general fund to wellness and the general fund to nutrition. And the request is to do half of that at this time with the first half of the tax collections. And we'll do the second half then once we've received the second half of tax collections. So those are within the budgeted amounts that the code does require. They need to an actual resolution before I transfer anything.
I would accept a motion to... Have these inter-operating transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Sho.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye. Okay, Item Number 4, consider resolution to terminate 28E agreement with Central Iowa Recovery, C I R, with possible action.
This one's one of my boards that I serve on. C I R is a board that has been struggling financially. There's been a plan to merge C I R with another county's Friends Forever, which does very similar things. And so, for that reason, Warren County has been a part of that board for quite some time. But it is on the verge of dissolving and having it merged into another group. There is going to be a... I don't know if you want to call it a shelter, but a business location for C I R with the new Friends Group. They might change their name here in Indianola. And so, the functionality of what they do is not going to change. It's just going to change our seating table. We're going to step back and how it... Looks like Madison County did this in August. And this just gives us the ability to exit the 28E agreement. So I would encourage approval. And I'll make a motion to approve the termination of the Central Iowa Recovery 28E agreement.
Second.
Sho.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye. Okay, Item 5, this discussion of Justice Center with possible action.
All right, well, looks like this one is... I'll start the discussion. As you all probably know, I've been appointed to serve on the user group as the board supervisor's representative. We've now met twice. Last Thursday was our second meeting. And that is with users as well as our architect and D C I. To that end, I think, you know, I didn't script anything for you. I didn't write any comments out in advance. But I'm going to just share with you my thoughts and sort of the direction I'd like to see us go. And I'm going to be very honest. I have a two-pronged approach to this issue. There's two paths, as I see it. But I'll give you a little bit of a background. You know, I think many people in the room probably are aware that in my other role, I'm an attorney. And so, I represent injured workers. And I deal a lot with insurance companies. And I deal with other attorneys. And at some point, without fail, in every one of my cases, I have 100% of my client's interest at heart. But at some point, I want to step back and I want to sort of switch my perspective. And so, I want to look at that case from the other side. I want to look at it from the company or from the insurance company or from the defense attorney and sort of look at the facts under a different light. Because I want to do what's best for my client. But I want to also understand sort of where things might shake out. And so, I've done that with this in great depth. And to that end, I think there's lots of different quote-unquote sides. You know, it certainly can be contentious. There's certainly going to be a motion that goes into what happens here. We've got a really good rule to fill and how we handle this. And so, I sort of stepped back and just started being objective. Started looking at this project from every one side. Sides that I maybe disagree with, sides that, you know, I thought, "Well, that doesn't make much sense." But to that end, I think some of those quote-unquote sides, I think we have to be very cognizant of the users. Because those are the people that the functionality of the building are going to be vital for now and in the future. That's the corps. That's our sheriff's department. That's our county attorney. Those are the main users. I posit that the building schematics that were presented and that came in way over bid, you could also include juvenile probation as well as a centralized congregant meal site. But those would really be the users. Additionally, when I look back at the voters, I look at, you know, what was passed in that referendum. And I don't take that lightly because it is darn hard to pass a referendum on anything that means you're going to pay more taxes or you're going to have an increase in your debt levy. And to get almost 70%, that has some meaning to me. And I don't take that lightly. I think we sort of covered the taxpayer. But I've got some nuanced views on quote-unquote the taxpayer. But I think we have to be cognizant of what happens with that debt levy and what happens with the individual taxpayer. Because a $30-plus million building is not inexpensive. There's no way to cut it. It's going to increase the levy and that has an impact for every single person in this county that pays taxes. Timing, I think that timing is pretty important. You know? If you look at what we're doing as a county that is transporting prisoners to another county at a pretty expensive cost. I mean, I've seen averages from $800,000 to north of that on an annualized basis. That's not inexpensive. But beyond the monetary cost of that is, you know, the potential harm that we are doing or increasing our liability with our deputies that are transporting, with the prisoners that we are transporting. It's one icy road. It's one, you know, freak semi-truck accident away from having some real liability. So every extra day that we are transporting prisoners, I will posit that is additional risk for our county, for our employees, for our prisoners. And so, timing matters to me. I also have given a great deal of thought about an off-site location. Because, just to be frank with you all, you probably have gathered by now that I'm not exactly a politician. And I'm fine with that. I don't care. So I might say some things wrong from time to time, and that's fine. But off-site location, I think, you know, as a building grows, and if it needs to grow, would it be better to have that on 20 acres on a green site? No. Is it cheaper to build out versus up? It is. Parking, you'd have a lot more flexibility in an off-site location. Furthermore, I'm a Pelican. We have a beautiful square in Pelham. Indianola had and can have a beautiful square here. I keep thinking back to the bond. And I keep thinking about what would happen if it was my hometown? Would we have approved putting in jail on that square? And I will tell you, if it was free, we would not approve jail on the square. We do not want or need prisoners on our square. You know, it is what it is. I think that there has been, as the trees were pulled out, as there's now a wide open space on Indianola Square, I think there has been a shift, to some extent, not fully, but to some extent, about what could be on the square, what should be on the square. And I think that's opened some eyes and maybe moved that conversation a little further. Those are some of my main concerns. To that end, I try to be a problem solver. And I heard in the last month or couple weeks, some of the main contentions about the building site. And those that were evident to me were, to be honest, the courts are terrified that if they have a building without shell space, that they know that they're going to come back to this board or a future board and have to make a request. It's going to be a difficult request. It's going to be, hey, we now need six courtrooms. Like we've always told you that we're going to eventually need six courtrooms. And the building needs to grow. Will you pony up the money and make it grow? And that's a voter choice. That's a bond issue. One, I suppose, if this board or a new board could determine to ignore it and maybe not present it to the public and kick the can down the road for a long period of time, or not. But ultimately, it's still going to be up to the voters whether or not they would approve an expansion. And the courts don't want that. They don't want that because I think they may be sent an initial letter correspondents to this former board in 2006 or '07 saying, "Hey, we know that we've got some issues with your court system there, with the building. And we'd like you to start looking at it." And it's 2019 by my watch. And so, they know that if they had to come back to us and to the voters of Warren County in the short term, because the building is not adequate from the start, or at least arguably inadequate, that's a real concern to them. Additionally, I heard the county attorney here say that there's, as presented, that design had room for about one more county attorney. And he, it was their opinion, or maybe an assistant county attorney's opinion, that that didn't seem like a great forward-thinking approach to have room to grow, one, in the course of 20 years. I also am very cognizant of what the other two board members here are saying in meetings. I heard Supervisor Shoal state that every one of us wants a building that is going to be functional during the pendency of the repayment. And that's true. I want that. Doug wants that. Christmas wants that. It would be very short-sighted to build something that needed to grow in three years or four years. Because it certainly wouldn't last the life of the 20-year loan repayment. And to the chamber and to the city council of Indianola, you know, I think that there's maybe a split there to some extent on what they'd like on the square. But we ultimately know that if the building's not on the square, something has to be on the square. And so, to that end, I've met with the mayors of our three largest towns, cities. I anticipate meeting with the other mayors as well or city councils. I'm going to Indianola tonight to present. But those were some of the considerations that I had. So to that end, and I know I'm long-winded, but to that end, I wanted to look at, oh, we also have some cost of design. Land acquisition costs would certainly come into play for an off-site location. But to that end, I wanted to look at the building and see, is there a way in which we can sort of view it with different eyes than check those boxes so that it's functional right out of the chute? And so, then it would be our hope that it would not need to grow for at least 20 years if not longer. So to that end, we looked at the building design. And what we noted was that in the basement of the building, there is some unexcavated space. There is approximately 9,000 square feet in the basement that is unexcavated as was presented to us, which came in $6 million hot, or almost $7. So there's some space now. I looked at the space. And it's really broken into two corridors. About a 4,000-square-foot corridor and an approximate 5,000-square-foot corridor. And I asked D C I to sort of give us an estimate on what it would cost to shell space the entirety of the basement. We got those numbers back. And those numbers looked like an approximate $1.2 million for a full 9,000-square-foot of unfinished shell space in the basement of Justice Center. But it's not insignificant. But it certainly checks some boxes of future growth for the county attorney, for the corps. You know, it meets some of that. And I'm not stating that we need 9,000 additional square feet. But I certainly think that at that price, and it's not linear in nature, so you can't say, "Well, if we did 4,500 square feet, it would be 600,000." It doesn't exactly work like that with HVAC and electrical. But, you know, taking another 5,000 or 6,000 square feet in the basement would make some sense. And then, going back to the user group that I sit on, what we need to do is we need to condense some of the first two stories. Because we can't, as the building sits presently, it's about $35 million. So just adding $1.2 million, that doesn't have a whole lot of appeal to me. So we need to sort of find ways in which we can scale down, not gut, but scale down the size of the building. There's one thought. I balance that thought with the task that I think, I said, "I step back and look at all perspectives." I think there's some perspectives that are out there that say, "Hey, the voters approved a bond for $29.9 million. Build a building for $29.9 million." And that approach is not an approach that I remotely interested in doing for this reason. To get the building from $35 down to total price tag of $29.9 or even $31.2, I know what sort of cuts are going to be made to the building. And we might be looking at a 70,000-square-foot building, at best. We might be looking at a 69,000-square-foot building, realistically. And that's not going to get the job done right out of the chute. And so, I am absolutely firm and resolute in this statement. Under no circumstances will I approve or vote for a building that is not going to be functional day one. That is a $30 billion mistake, in my mind. And it will need to expand. And for that reason, that is a non-starter here. It just isn't going to happen. I also wanted to give, and I'm not trying to pigeonhole the other two supervisors here at all. They can speak for themselves. But I also wanted to look at, what did the green site look like? Because I'm very cognizant of what the taxpayers who are going to be paying for this building have in this. And I got an estimate with a low range of $39.8 million, a higher range of $42.3 million. And importantly, the issue with that approach is pretty simple. It's we have a window that we can tweak the top two floors and get that out to bid by end of January, early February, where we can catch an appropriate bid time. If we look at sort of prong one, which is what I just discussed. If we look at prong two, which is, "Hey, we're not putting a building there. We're going to go look at a green site." My guess, and my honest guess, is that it's probably going to be all of $40 million right out of the chute. That's a question for the voters. I like the idea of a green site. I'm personally fine with a bit more. But I think it would be inappropriate to not explore the first option very fully prior to doing that. And so, that would be my thoughts. Because the green site, we can work hard on fixing the plans to fix the top two stories and probably get the whole price in the $34 million range. And that's more than what we thought it was going to cost for that location. One of the other considerations that I can't, I think I should address it, is that I went back and I looked at the language prior to the referendum. Because I wanted to see what that looked like. And I sat in that meeting. I think some of you sat in that meeting, too. I know Skip did. I know the 911 did. And so, on June 8, 2018, the then-board, it was right after the primary, and the then-board got together in what is now our dispatch room. And we looked at sort of, what are we going to ask the voters to vote on in the referendum? And I don't remember if it was Shire or if it was D C I that made an original range. And they had a range. I mean, make no mistake about it. There was a range. There was a low end of the range. And there was a high end of the range. And so, I'm not here to say, "Hey, you should have done this. You shouldn't have done that." But on the higher end of the range for the building as designed, it was $33.4, $33.6. And I can't remember. I haven't heard the audio. It wasn't in the actual resolution. But the chairwoman made a motion for $33.4 or $33.6 because that's what it was going to cost to put a building on the square. So she raised her hand and said, "I'll make a motion." And that's what the motion was for. "We'll go on the low end and say it was $33.4." It was one of the two. I can't recall. And it was voted down 2 to 1. The next number was 29, I think, which was probably on the low end. That was voted down 2 to 1. And we settled at $29.9. So when I look at that and when I consider that, you know, the board has discussed adding some reserve funds to the building in the area of $1.2, if we can realistically get this thing done for $34, and you take $33.4 and another, you know, $1.2 or less than $1.2, there's the building. There it is. It can be done. So those are my thoughts. I think that no matter what, one of those two paths are going to happen. And no matter what, I think that we owe it to the voters to at least give them a say on the $3 million that we sort of have a shortfall on. And yeah, there's creative ways to finance it. And so, it can be done either way if we go with prong one. But I wanted to see what it was. And I think I made a comment in one of our meetings or a work session about what those $3 or $4 million look like to the debt levy. And yeah, I probably use colorful language And yeah, I probably use colorful language from time to time or I use words that, you know, I forget that you've got some reporters here and they take those quotes and they put it down. But I think I said something along the lines of "back of napkin math." Someone or other in the county took offense to that. And so I realized, well, we have a fiduciary of him to work and his firm, DA Davidson, to work. So I looked at what $3 million looked like and what $4 million looked like. $3 million is an 8 cent increase to the debt levy. $4 million is a little under 11 cents to the debt levy. So putting that in perspective, Meg and our board assistant ran some numbers. And I think we were a little low when we ran them because we were thinking maybe 4 cents. But that works out fine because I can multiply that times 2. 4 cents on $100,000 assessed property look like $2 and change annually. I don't know what that is divided by 12. I suppose I can do it for you. Was that right, Meg? In $2 and what, 20? $2.30? Divided by 12, 19 cents a month. But since we know that 4 is half of 8, we're going to take that times 2. That's 38 cents a month. That's what $3 million looks like on a $100,000 assessed property in the county. So for those of you that have a $200,000 home in the county, just going to multiply that times 2, that is 76 cents per month. And just to keep it nice and clean, for those that have a $400,000 home in the county, take it times 2, that is $1.53 a month. Times 12, that is $18.39 on an annual basis. Now, the bond is 20 years. So do the math on that yourself. But if you live in a $400,000 home, and we request, and I think we owe it to the voters, to say, would you like to finance it this way or would you like to finance it another way? A $400,000 home looks like $18.39 a year. A $200,000 property is $9.19 a year. And there's another way to finance it. We can theoretically do re-offering premiums and we can pay 5% on the debt instead of 2% on the debt. But either which way, that's sort of what the numbers are. And so that's a consideration. Then, and finally, I circle back to the taxpayer question. Because I know that there are people on the board and there are people in the county that their main issue is what does it do to the debt levy? What does that look like? So I sort of extrapolated out from there. And I extrapolated to this. If we don't build a building on the square, which is fine, and I'm okay with that. If the voters want to build a green site building and it's 38 or 40 million dollars right out of the chute, that's fine. It'll be a 2021 bid date because there's no way that we're going to be able to get that done and those designs done prior to the optimal bidding time, which is February. And so we'll burn a year. But more importantly, is something that I've learned a whole lot about, and that's construction inflation. Every year that we delay this, you can just take 1.06 or 1.07, 6% or 7% construction inflation. And you can multiply that times whatever the cost of the building is. Well, when you're working with 30 or 35 million dollars, that's a lot of money. At 30 million, you can add $1.8 million every year. Well, to start, it grows. At 40 million, that's times 1.01, 160%. It's $2.4 million. So my fear is this. And I'm being as transparent as I can with people. My fear is this. If the plans get scrapped for the square and we go to a green site, without a doubt, the public has to approve it. We have to do it. We can't use our proceeds from prong one. It's going to be up to the public. So is there an appetite to? And I think that the bond at a minimum should be 40. What we can't do is undercut it and have bids come in high and then not be able to do that. That's just a future humongous problem. And maybe it's nickel or I don't know. But it's going to be expensive. But the problem is this. What if the voters of this county are like Dallas County? And they see the sticker shock on 38 or 37 or 35? And they say, hey, this building could have been built for that. We say, no. Six months again, you try it again. You wait six months, you try it again. I think Dallas County waited a year or two before they got their building built. I don't, I'm not really interested in having our officers transport for an extra two years, three years. I'm not interested in taking a 35 or 36 million dollar building and increasing the cost of just building, you know, $2 million every year that the voters don't approve it. I think that that path has a lot of appeal, but it sure has a lot of risk. And so for that reason, I'm here with two paths. The first path that we discussed and the second path. And for those that are very, very, very keenly focused on what does this do to the debt levy? Well, that's 8 cents more than what we thought. Sure, it is. You're right. And what does $40 million do to the debt levy? Whenever the voters pass it. It might not be next year. It might be two years from now. What does $45 million do to the debt levy? If that scenario plays out long enough, eventually, maybe the voters just throw up their hands and say, fine. What if that cost is $45 million? Or more. It might be. And so for those reasons, I'm pretty inclined to look earnestly. And I welcome your discussion. I welcome the other two supervisors' discussion of the first option and the second option. But between the construction inflation costs and the almost all-time low interest rates, you can add another million dollars to the project if we're not at all-time low interest rates whenever the voters approve a green site bond referendum. Because we're not going to have 2.5% repayment on our debt. We might have 3.5% repayment on our debt. So there's another chunk of money that you're going to pay back over the life of the loan, which will ultimately greatly impact the debt levy as well. And so I'm going to now stop talking because it's been forever. Those are my thoughts. I'm genuine in my approach and that I'm okay with either option. But I think we need to make a decision relatively quickly. Because the final, final, final thing is that I have been tasked with, I don't want to call it the impossible, but very, very difficult task of going back to the user group meetings and finding a way to make it work with the 29.9 that we have and potentially 1.2 addition. To do option one, which I'm not going to lie to you, it's going to be $34 million. And what's it going to be? But to do that, our architect and our building contractor, these people don't work for free. And so it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me to go sit in those meetings and have them redraw building plans and shrink it down to 69,000 square feet or whatever fits the number. And we're just working towards putting in the number and then having a building that we're not going to do. I mean, that's $400,000, $500,000 of design fees. I'm not interested in throwing my good money at your bad. And so if one of the other two supervisors that are up here with me are interested in looking at option one with a full understanding that it's probably going to be 34, with a full understanding that what that'll do to our levy rate is 8 to 10 cents if the voters approve 3 or if the voters approve 4 or if we finance it creatively. Great. If they're not, then I'm not inclined to go out to the user group meeting and tell them, push through a building at 29.9, that's not going to be functional because they're not going to vote for it. So those are my thoughts. I'm now done. And I'm going to take notes and listen. That's where we're at. And that's all I have to say.
Supervisor Shoal?
I think I'll start out by saying that I just sat a yard apart from this guy. But I think I need a chalkboard to keep track of everything he said. There was a lot of numbers and where I really go to is, and I think I understand the two options, on the square and off the square. Fair enough?
That's correct.
I got that much out of it. The, I think, I go back to what I think I in good faith accepted. That when we put this on the ballot in August of 2018, which was a year ago, it was the 29.9 plus maybe a million two. And some of the things, number one, since then, I'm going to say the users have added probation, juvenile, and meal site that we're not a part of it. I think that I felt from the court system that, from what I understand, maybe we have one jury trial a month. So that means you average 10 or 12 a year. So that's one thing that I understood a year ago. Number two is I think the sheriff at that time was talking about maybe 38. So in my history with the county, we used to have about 20. And then when this sort of came upon the scene, what are we going to do with the jail? That quite frankly proved as like 38 or 40 in a hurry. And now I understand we're at 60. And so I'm not sure I understand where all those numbers come from. I think I made this statement before. I think it'll be, in my opinion, very difficult to take this thing off the square and get 60%. That's just, that's just an opinion I have. We did get 70% that agreed to it. I think that Indianola Council passed it 6 to 0 to have it on the square. I don't know what Norvok might have done, but they were part of the meetings and as well as Carlisle were part of the meetings. So and I think Supervisor Aaron did indicate that he has talked to him or he's going to talk to him because I think tonight he's going to Indianola City Council. But anyway, I have been one that's put it on the square. I guess I understand why you can't build it for 29.9 or 31.1. Because from the original plan that I had good faith to accept, we've added some square footage for probation, juvenile meals. And in the original, there was about $7,500, $7,500, 7,500 square foot of shell space. So something happened between when we took it on, put it on the ballot a year ago and what we're currently looking at. So I'm still a square guy. And I'm not sure if we have to go back to the voters and ask for more money. I understand that. I think that'll be difficult. But I do understand that apparently we can't build it for, I'm going to call it 31.1. So those are sort of my words about where I'm currently at.
Thank you. Well, my history with this goes back to when I was first elected. I met with the county attorney's office and the sheriff after I had toured the sheriff's jail throughout my campaign in 2014. And saw the examples of mold in the courthouse and several asbestos abadements throughout the years, knowing that the asbestos was right there. I was concerned for those of the public who were concerned about the workers that had to go there every day. And made this a priority. Now, since that time, I've been aware that we had a failing 911 communication system. And our engineers, secondary roads, had need of a secondary road shop that has been shovel-ready for two years. And has actually been in the works since 2011. So I think there were lots of needs in Warren County. And had I had hindsight, I probably would have prioritized that things different. But as it was, now we're faced with a courthouse that last year wanted to go back on the square. And going through nine months in 2015 with Shire Hattery and the users and determining the most economical way for the county to get this taken care of would be building on a green space, a new building. And that's what we brought up in a bond, which on the day that the board of supervisors, we were supposed to approve the bond, it had started at 22 million, went to 28 million. And on the day that supervisors were to approve it, all of a sudden it was at 35 million. So I was supervisor Shoal and that numbers have been thrown out and arbitrarily, I don't know if they look at it as a, well, to county or what it is. But I feel personally that we are trying to be fleeced. I think we can build a building, maybe it won't be so pretty. It won't be as beautiful as we wanted it to be on the square. But we can definitely have the utility and the function in a building on the square and kept in budget. And that is my opinion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I'll say is this. If we can't take corrective action, resize the top two floors, put shell space which covers future growth. If we can't get that done, then I don't see a building going on the square, a Justice Center going on the square. I think other things might. But I, I'm pretty aware that the green site idea has some real risks. Interest rate risk, construction inflation risk, voter approval risk. It is not, it is not an easy thing to accomplish. And in the event that voters decline to pay more than what could be built and what they've approved, at least location-wise, to get done, they might say no. And that leads us right back to where we are with a three-member board, where each one of us, I will commend you both, every single person up here has good intentions. No one's trying to do anything underhandedly. We look at things differently and that's fine. We all want success. And I'm just getting more and more fearful that if we cannot reach a compromise, if we cannot reach at least a two-person consensus, but it would be my preference to be three, then there's no scenario that doesn't have a higher impact on the taxpayer and very likely an off-site location. If Indianola, we talked to them tonight, if they have not changed in their perspective, then I would guess that we're going to have a fight on location. And while I understand the nuances of getting into those such things, you know, the big issue about a green site application is that you cannot run a 70-person prison in the court system on a lagoon. It is not going to happen. So for those that think, well, land's really cheap 10 miles north of Indianola, it's not. We could find some farm somewhere and put this building. If it is not able to be seared, if we do not have infrastructure, which is the city of Indianola sewered, then we cannot build a lagoon that's going to service that size of a structure and that many inmates and the huge flushes of the toilet. So it has to be very close to Indianola, if not inside the city limits. If they are displeased with the location and even if the voters approve it, we do not have the power to force them to annex us in. we do not have the power to force them to annex us in. We probably can twist an arm to get a sewer, but I don't know, maybe it's a lawsuit. So for those reasons, I, I'm not opposed to a green site. I just think everyone needs to be eyes wide open on the cost, on the guarantee that it won't go out to bid until twenty-twenty-one. So you're already earning another year and a half. So you can already take my math of one point oh-six times whatever the number is and add two million more dollars to it. You could probably add a third million dollars if interest rates are not at all-time historically low rates. And then you can rerun the numbers on what that does, the debt levy. But I think our timing, if you're genuinely interested in, in getting a building built on the square, I think our timing is pretty short. I'd also absolutely understand and like to let the voters have a say. There's no reason why not. I'm not one that says, if we don't take it to the voters, they'll offer us zero more dollars. But I'm afraid to take it to the voters because they might say no. Well, if they say no, we're, nothing changes. Let them have the voice. Maybe they will, maybe they will say yes. So put a two-question voter question on location change. Put a two-question, or the second question on three or four million dollars, specifically if it's the first one. And let's see if we can get something built. But if we don't, then there, it makes no sense for me to go and spend five hundred thousand more dollars on a redesign that's not going to, that's not going to happen, not going to happen. And to the point of additional things that are in the building, I think that's valid, Doug. We're not required by law to have probation and juvenile in the building. But they're across the street. And if they're in the building, does that free up some space that could be commercial property and actually help the taxpayers? Yep. One of them pays about a thousand dollars a month rent. They're in the building, does that help defray the cost of the building? Sure does. Having a congregate meal site that's centrally located versus having, how many, we have three or four of them? Six of them. Getting rid of six congregate meal production sites and having prisoners work or having the staff there work on those meals, does that, does that create some efficiencies and cost savings? Positive it does. And so I, I get that it's, you know, about three million dollars more than maybe we're comfortable with. But there is the path to get a building on the square. And we can work real diligently to increase the cost by adding shelf space in the basement that allows it to grow out or grow, grow down versus out. And I've already addressed what that looks like to the taxpayer. But I, I can't get my head around the potential, it's not unlimited, but it's, it's going to be more upside to the taxpayer in the event that we do something off-site just with the place. And so for those reasons, I, I can't, I can't do it as one. The other two have to sort of sign on. And maybe, maybe Indianola City Council will have some thoughts on it too. But I, I'm indifferent to which of the two want to join that proposal. But it, it certainly checks the boxes of getting it done in viable day one as well as allowing it to grow down versus up. And I think that, to be frank, the voters in Norwalk, in my estimation, and I don't have a perfect grade, I don't speak for them, but I think they care. I think that they, they, they don't care where it goes, let's say that. They don't care. They care about what it costs. They care about is it functional? And they care about why this hasn't been done yet. Some of the voters in Indianola, I think, do care where it goes. And, and I heard loud and clear that one of the reasons that the go-up proposal had some real appeal is because that preserves green space. That allows the community to have some portion of the square as a park, like said. It's probably beneficial for bike night or future rate rides or whatever. To have some grass and some trees and some gardens or whatever. Well, you know, I'm not a, I'm not an architect. We established that earlier, but we, but we know this. If the, if the thought is going up preserves green space, does going down preserve the same green space? The answer is it does. So we can, we can see where, where they're at. But I, I know that we can't cut a thirty-five million dollar building down to thirty-one-two and make it functional. Even pulling those three things out, which I think would be short-sighted because there are, that is an efficiency. It, it would be nice to have juvenile and probation right there. It would raise a little bit of revenue. And it might free up the West Annex to, to be rented into something that helps the tax rolls versus take space and to have a congregate meal site there. I think those are all efficiencies. And I think that was the goal that, that we were tasked with is to, to, to look out for the county investment, not just the day, but down the road. And so I think it's very forward. I, I think we can, we can add the shell space and then go back and make the harder cuts. But I don't, I'm not, I'm not trying to mislead anyone. It's not going to be, it's not going to be a thirty-million-dollar building. So I'm hopeful to pick up one, so that's what I got.
Can it be cut to thirty-two million?
You know, DCI is here. And if they want to weigh in, they're certainly welcome to. Or maybe they, maybe you or maybe they don't. I didn't get the sense, I didn't get the sense that that's, that that's reality. And I, and I think that, I just think it's better to operate in reality. You know, I, I can't, with all respect, I can't go back to that June meeting and realize that, you know, the motion was for thirty-three something. Just, I just, I don't think it will. I think you're going to lose too much functionality. You're going to, you're going to lose those three things. And you're still going to have to, to change the envelope and the size of the building to hit thirty-two. And I, I don't think that at two million dollars, that I'm not making light that I don't have a bank account that says two million dollars. I understand that's a lot of money. I also understand that at three million dollars, it's eight cents, which we went through those numbers. Four dollars a year for a hundred thousand dollars. I, I think that, that yeah, maybe, maybe it's possible, but I don't think it's prudent. I don't think it's prudent at all that we're not going to have the efficiencies. And with all due respect to the user group, the citizen user group that stopped meeting then right after the bond passed in August, they, they weren't involved with the thirty-some odd meetings that happened and transpired after that point. These are, these are our public employees, these are our courts, these are people that use the building, trying to find the most functional, efficient way to get it done. Did the, did the size increase? Sure did. But so did the tariffs. So did, so did lots of other things. So did the sewer plant here in Indianola. I mean, what did that go out on the bond for? I think it was twenty-five million dollars. If that thing gets built for less than thirty-three or thirty-five, she's going to have color me shocked. Costs have gone up. And so I don't, I think it might be possible, Crystal, I just don't think it would be prudent.
To me, that would build a building without raising taxes. Give me for this. That's just where, where I'm at.
That's, that's fine. And I get and appreciate that. But for, for both the other two supervisors, I'm not trying to be that guy or I'm not trying to put you on the spot. But I, I told you I deal with reality and I do. And so if this building doesn't happen and a green site building is more than that, is that going to raise taxes or not? Is that going to raise the debt levy if the green site building ultimately gets built after the voters approve it or in two or three years and it's forty-two million dollars? Is that, is that a raise of taxes? I tell you, I think it is.
It is, but it also defers the moving of the building in the future at a much higher cost. If it remains on the square.
I don't see the building needing to move in the future if we have shell space, if it's functional day one. I met with the users, I asked them about this approach. They were all, three user groups were very positive on it. They're all ready to get to work on scaling down the top four, top two floors because they know that it's functional day one. And with shell space, it's functional in the future. And so I don't see a moving of the court under any circumstances, even on the square location. I mean, if you, if you think about what's transpired in the last twenty or thirty years with technology, I tell you, we're just starting. I have no idea what technology is going to be like in thirty years tomorrow. But the internet was pretty fledgling twenty-five years ago. Maybe some of those functions are, are, are done electronically or that, I, I don't know. I'm just saying, I, I think that's, I, I don't think there's a way to quantify we, the statement, we will have to move the building at some point. I don't see that. I know that.
Well, we are growing by three to four percent a year. So that does need more space in the future.
I guess I would just add that with the shell space in the basement, that's where they can grow into. You know, if heaven forbid, we needed to, you know, crime is rampant in twenty years from now, which is speculative at best. But let's say for your argument sake that it is, and we need to have another jail location, would it not be possible then to buy five or ten acres somewhere and put up a minimum security jail and hold whichever prisoners we need to hold here and whichever ones we need to hold somewhere else? Sure. Is it optimal? Nope. But is it doable? Yep. I, I just think there's lots of ways to, to fix a problem without saying that, hey, the building's going to have to be moved. I mean, theoretically, I, I would argue it's probably not functional at twenty-nine-nine right after the shoot. And that would be, I wouldn't call it moving it, but you might have to have a separate courthouse like we have now. I wouldn't, but under no circumstances would I say some future board in twenty years is going to tear it down or move it. I think that you have to address problems as they come. Planning, of course, along the way, of some contingencies.
We can't have no foresight though. I don't see any possible action on this. So moving on to item six. Consider a representative to Iowa Workforce Development Board with possible action. I would like to ask Supervisor Shul or DeCook to serve on the Iowa Workforce Development Board.
I probably ought to be the one to do that one because he's got some big responsibilities here on the Justice Center.
Yes.
Sho, DeCook?
Aye.
Mackinart?
Aye. Okay, item seven, discussion regarding community representative official contract for twenty-twenty census with possible action. Okay, this was brought to my attention that there's going to be a community representative who will sit on a board for the Warren County twenty-twenty census. So what of you willing to take that on? The meetings will start either this month or next month. And I believe that that will help gather more people throughout Warren County to sit on this committee.
Yeah, I'll, I'll volunteer for that.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Tracy.
Sho?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye.
Mackinart?
Aye. Okay, item eight, consider resolution confirming use of vacation or compensatory leave for two thousand nineteen RABRAT event with possible action. I believe you should leave this in your packet.
Yeah, just had a few questions for the board. I'd like to know how this policy specifically applies to our department during events.
Well, I'll attempt to address your question. It came about years ago when a snowstorm happened and some employees came to Warren County and others did not, were not able to make it. And the ones who weren't able to make it were given the day off. And those who worked, of course, were paid, led to paying to work for it. So that created a huge conflict. And the board at that point forward decided that if there was some type of major event, that they would leave the offices open. And if people wanted or could not make it, they had to make a, make a choice of either using their vacation or some other time off of their own.
So their earned vacation is dictated by the board in case of an event that the employees have no choice over? Is that correct?
Because we're a public entity, yes.
So back to the, I guess, the previous example for snow removal. If we're on call for hazardous events such as snow, are we required to burn vacation in that case because it's a severe weather or I guess emergency condition that the policy addresses? And I don't see where it actually addresses events.
I wouldn't know, have an answer for you there. I don't know if I better make any, address your concern. So stay deal with that.
The resolution that I drafted specifies that the RABRAT event is considered similar to an emergency situation, what is in the, so it says, whereas being on the two thousand nineteen RABRAT route was especially that causing disruption subject to weather emergency conditions. So that's the resolution that I drafted. Simply because if some employees took this as vacation or comp, some did not. So one way or the other, the board needs to give us direction. If you're going to allow employees to have it as workdays, then I need permission to adjust everybody that took it as vacation or comp. If you're going to stand by the policy and say that this is considered the same, then it will be for just everyone that took it as workdays when they did not work.
May I? Did we not notify all the departments by email about the policy?
Oh, we had a work session prior to the RABRAT that where we discussed that the building would stay by default with the board not doing a resolution to close offices. It wasn't regular workday, it was a Tuesday. So it fell, fell under that policy. And during the work session that we had, we discussed that department heads could choose to close their office if they wanted to. But it would require their employees to take vacation, was the, the work session conversation. So I'm just trying to clean this up and then make sure that one way or the other you directly to make it the same for all employees.
So the employees, department heads knew about?
Yes.
So I can address a few things. I guess you, you said the building's closed, that affects about five of our employees. We operate out of satellite locations, I can't call them shops, they're a piece of the ground. We operate, we operate out of a main shop facility, we have multiple projects going on. So to tie us just to a building where multiple apartments were closed, I don't feel really it fits. I, I'd like to caution the board on kind of, kind of blindly following one-size-fits-all mentality because as you're aware, our departments do function under different roles and responsibilities. If we want to do the all-size-fits mentality, I guess another question I have is how can employees be on call and burn vacation at the same time? And then speaking more to that matter, if I have an employee with less than six months of time, are they required to burn paid time for events? That again, they had no choice over. And as far as, yes, the board was transparent about allowing departments some flexibility and saying they have and saying they have closed their office, but we did not get clear direction necessarily. Whether or not that's the case, we're still on call. If we wanna redefine what our goals and responsibilities are as a department, whether we respond to tornadoes, blizzards, flooding, any other emergencies, then we really need to strongly consider blanking a poli, you know, what effect it has blanking a policy across every department that specifically in my eyes only deals with weather and emergencies. So now we're just calling an event an emergency related condition, an event that we invited with open arms. And I have a few more questions too. But again, how can I call employees earn vacation at the same time? And I, I guess I've yet to receive an answer on that question.
Since you're the attorney, you're telling inside it now, I mean, I don't.
This isn't the sort of law that I do.
Sorry.
No worries, hey, here's, here's my take though. I'm disappointed that the direction was given and not followed. So I'll state that because that's true, that's how I feel. That said.
Is that our direction?
I feel like we met with the department heads and said, here are the options, choose one. And that, that didn't happen. And so trying to fix that after the fact is, is not something I think I want to be dealing with on a main case in future occasions because it was clear in my mind that if it's option A or option B, then you pick one of those options and, and the chips sort of fall where they fall. That said, so I'm not happy about that. But that said, I, I do think that the on-call aspect of the engineer's department does make it a little differently, different. And so while, while I would have preferred to address this prior to RABR versus after the fact, which I don't think is, is a good thing at all. I do think that that should have been more thoroughly addressed beforehand. But I, I get it, if we had a, some sort of a road emergency, are, are his staff going to be called in? Whether or not we have our office closed or open, if they're on call, they're on call. And so I did that argument, I think that makes sense. It just would have been a lot better to, to address that. Hey, board, hey, attorney's office, option A and option B don't work for us because and then that conversation should have taken place before RABR. But I.
I think our department feels the same way because we were very open and transparent about what we were doing. We had posted, maybe it wasn't directly sent to the board, but again, some of those meetings are thoughts, I mean, we were arguing about parking spaces for most of the meetings where the attorneys were in a car.
I remember. But therein lies the problem is that it should have been addressed prior to reforming because then we could avoid this in a public setting.
So what we posted was either you're on vacation and you're not on call or you're on call. So there are employees that did take vacation. But by definition, when you're on vacation, you're not getting called in. You could be in Florida, you could be anywhere, it's vacation, it's earned money employees.
And I also will say, I do agree with, I do take a little issue with a weather event, which is truly out of, out of anyone's control versus a special occasion event. So I am sympathetic to that aspect. And lastly, I think the total dollar amount on this is somewhere in the neighborhood of seven thousand dollars. I don't say that's insignificant, but for those that worked, I don't, I don't. I'm, I'm going to side with our engineer on this one. I don't like how it was handled at all. I don't like the after the fact.
We don't either.
Aspect of this.
And we agree, we, I hundred percent agree with that because we don't agree with that either, we don't get the facts.
But, but that, that sort of falls on your shoulders to handle it before the fact, before RABR, in a formal setting, saying, plan A doesn't work for us, plan B doesn't work for us, and this is why. And so let's come up with a plan C. That should have been done prior to RABR. I'm not gonna, so my pass, but I'm not gonna be a signatory to the resolution because I don't think it's a weather event. But I dislike strongly how this was handled.
Well, I would say it falls on my shoulders to make an informed decision based on what I know. And it's not just me, I talked to other state county officials, I hear the horror stories of what can come with large scale events. And I guess as apartment head, I choose not to incur all that risk and liability and do what's best at the end of the day for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Okay, what is before us is considering this resolution confirming the use of vacation or compensatory leave for the two thousand nineteen RABR event. So, so one make a motion.
I would make a motion that we confirm use of vacation or compensatory leave for two thousand nineteen RABR.
Is there a second? Okay, the resolution fails for failure of a second.
Then I'd like you to do a resolution allowing me to give back vacation or comp back to every other employee that followed the policy.
All right, I'd like to table this and come back to it at our next board meeting or special meeting. Okay, the next item on our agenda is nine, discussion regarding administrative clerk position with possible action.
As you're all aware, Bobbette will be retiring at the end of the year. Supervisor McIntyre asked that I put some lineups together. The Bobbette's position as well as the HR position. They kind of go hand in hand with the documents that I prepared, so I do nine and ten. Bobbette serves as the administrative clerk. In your packet, you have kind of the board's setup with board supervisor. I act as assistant board coordinator, budget coordinator. And Bobbette acts as paid clerk and administrative clerk for the board. Excuse me. So with Bobbette's retirement, I have a couple of projections here. The first one, let's call it a structure option A, which would be our current option, where we would replace Bobbette and replace the HR person. However, with my anticipated, Bobbette's anticipated payout and other retirement expenses and having an overlap of eight weeks of training time to stay within budget without any type of amendment to the board's budget, I would request that the HR position not be refilled until January of two thousand twenty. So we wouldn't, and we'd use those additional funds to pay for that overlap of training for that eight weeks on the new person that we'd hire. So following the timeline, in September, we would post the administrative clerk position for November one start date. In October, we would hire that clerk, we would then post the HR position for January one start date. The new administrative clerk would start in November one. In December, we could hire for the HR position and the current admin clerk, Ms. Bobbette, would retire. January, the new HR would start. Working through the numbers, it would be about an eighteen hundred dollar shortfall, but I'm, I'm confident that we can make up someplace else within the board's budget. This would require that the incoming clerk be at entry level. So we have the administrative clerk position as a grade twelve, which is right now with a current pay matrix between forty-three and sixty-three. So that would be at an entry level position. We would not be able to hire at a higher level than that unless we did a budget amendment to make up that difference. Option kind of B, Supervisor McIntyre asked that I put together, changing a little bit of the structure. Whereas right now, we have a part-time benefit clerk that's fifty percent board supervisors and fifty percent engineers office. Structure B would be eliminating that fifty percent benefit clerk position in the engineers and having that go to be a hundred percent engineers, that position. The HR person that we would hire in would then take over all of those functions as far as processing the benefits. So a timeline would be September, post for both positions, the admin clerk and the HR coordinator, both to be hired November one. October, we would hire both positions. November, they would start, December, current admin clerk would retire and the benefit clerk position would dissolve out of the, the part-time position and be full-time as the HR coordinator would take over all of those functions. So within our budget, we have wages for that benefit clerk. And as well as FICA or some insurance, about eighteen thousand dollars would be estimated remainder. So we would be able to hire both of those positions in November one. And that's eight weeks of overlap training on each of those positions for January one for them to be freestanding.
Just a couple of quick things, it looks like nine and ten would go together.
Yes.
Yes.
I was nine and ten on the agenda.
Yes.
And then if I understood you correctly, and there's an A and a B?
Yes, if you want to change the structure, yes.
I'm, I'm certainly okay with B. I don't know if I know how to make a motion or not.
Well, I would say then, for item nine, if you wanted to make a motion, I, I, really for me to advertise for the administrative clerk position with a November one start date so that there's those eight weeks of overlap. And then for item ten, for the human resource position, if you would like to make, make a motion for me to start that, to post for that one with a November one start date with the intention to dissolve the benefit clerk position January one. I think would be Don, would those make you happy?
Okay.
Who wants to make Don?
In a bad case, how do I make that?
You gotta check, you gotta check with Don on that one, otherwise he'll do a roll of the motion two weeks from now.
Okay, so let's address item nine regarding the administration clerk, administrative clerk. And that would have, well, if you're doing option B, that would have a start date of November one.
I would move that.
Is there any way to table these till our department has some time to kind of realize how this impacts us since it has to do with pulling staff hours from our office? I don't know, I believe there's a committee that might have met on this. Can, can we just have time to actually be involved in some of these discussions and revisit it?
We certainly can.
If I understand it right, you're gonna get more hours.
That's fine.
And you don't want.
I'd just like to have a meeting before we.
Okay, sure.
Kind of pull the trigger, so to speak.
Okay, then again, let's go ahead and table item nine and item ten.
Nine is fine, go ahead with nine, go ahead. Either option A or B, I get to rehire for Bobbette. So let's go ahead with nine and then you can table ten for the HR position because that's the one that are being taxed.
Okay.
Whatever, I will move. Don, you're gonna have to clean up whatever, but I would move.
Move for me to post for the administrative clerk position for November one starting.
That's it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Shoal?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye, thank you. And we are tabling item ten and item eleven, discussion regarding network administrator position with possible action.
So when our previous network administrator left and may have posted the position at the beginning of June to fill that spot, didn't get very good applicants. We did get some responses, not overwhelmingly. So I expanded the posting out to the Indeed site, so we would have a wider range and we got quite a few more applicants, but most of them because of the salary range are coming in with a year or less experience or maybe a little more than that. And it just won't meet our needs to be able to fill him or fill that person with someone under experienced. In that same timeframe, some of the duties have expanded to where the current, the previous position was a network administrator and now it's really with some of the technologies and the software we've added, has to be looked at more as a kind of a hybrid between a network administrator and a systems administrator. I did some research when the assessors came in here and checked our system also, they gave quite a bit of input on it. And we're battling a really good job market in Des Moines, fifteen miles north of us now, where the contract rate up there is fifty-five to sixty dollars an hour. For permanent positions, it's averaging over seventy-seven thousand a year and I had it posted at about sixty-four. So what I was looking to do was, some of the savings for this year, we could cover if I moved it up, the salary range to say seventy or seventy-three thousand. I've got that covered for this year, but then that would become the new baseline if we hired a person in that's a little more senior level, can cover our needs. And going forward, maybe be able to be a long-term replacement, if someone came in and just looked at it as a contract to hire or something like that. But, you know, I, I looked at it and discussed it with those fellows that came in and assessed. And the fellows that were here that did the assessment were IT directors for other counties, they're battling the same thing. And they know it. And one of the things we talked about was that we have the extra problem of being so close to Des Moines that if they are looking and balancing ninety thousand, eighty-seven thousand a year with what we're offering, even with the benefits package, which I know makes up quite a bit, I don't have a dollar figure for it, but I've mentioned it to, to the candidates that I have spoken to. And they both are, I kind of asked them for a range. If, you know, one I'm already doesn't fit, have you got something in mind? They were both around seventy-five. So I'm thinking just the fact that continued the conversation, if we go to the next step, if I can even get closer, if we might be able to get a candidate. And there was really only two out of, I wanna say twenty-eight, I think was my final number, that I got narrowed down and said, well, we can look at these, we interviewed some, but we just haven't hit that spot yet. So this is more, like I said, I can cover it out of the budget for the all coming piece, but then the next one, this, that would become the new baseline. And I didn't know whether the board would have a problem with that, if they needed to adjust maybe the description of it in order to make it fit or what other obstacles I have, but that's where I'm looking at it from.
So what you've just said, you could work it into the two thousand twenty budget?
Currently, it wouldn't make any changes at all because of the savings of having it occupied for the last three months. So that would offset it now, and that salary is already a sixty-four thousand, so it's not.
The two you talked about would be acceptable to you?
Yes. Any questions for me?
I don't know if we need any action, do we?
I don't think so, we have a big budget.
Yeah, he's gonna make it work.
Yeah. I think that's just a, a matter of pro-oftenation, if we have any revisions.
Okay.
And I understand what you're saying about the next year.
Okay, that was, it was an informational thing, I wanted everybody to be sure they understood that would happen.
If you have any information, is there a discussion on that? All right, the next item is item twelve, supervisor's report, Supervisor Shoal?
Yes, as George mentioned, there were six IT, I'm gonna call them directors, that came in to evaluate our system. So I met with them on the day they came here. And there were six different personalities, it was kinda interesting. And then the next day, I met with them again when they kind of came up with their recommendations. Have we gotten anything writing yet from them?
No, I would, by the end of the week or maybe beginning of next week was the timeframe they gave me.
But anyway, it was, it was interesting to just participate in that. But anyway, it was, it was interesting to just participate in that whole, the two days. So I, I, I met with those guys. We did have a de-cap meeting, and we did have a, I went to an IMU meeting, and then we had the final write-by-meeting where we had the write-by director came down and tell them what we liked and what we didn't like, and that's my report.
Did they have any numbers on the write-by meeting?
Yeah, the bottom line, we think we'll have a small surplus. And what that small surplus will be, will go to charity. But it, it, it's not very big, and we've got some, I think we've got all the bills in. We just, there, there are a few people that owe us a little something, but I think we'll be on the plus.
Imagine if the next... That's excellent. Okay. User group meetings, special meetings, heard of. Attended a legislative roundtable with our state senator and a couple, everyone that basically touched the Norwalk School District, representatives from both sides. Made some rounds with some of the cities. I'll be at Indianola City Council meeting tonight. Multiple conversations with a humbrous of people. Talked with our financial advisor, in contact with DCO and HR frequently. Attended the Norwalk Second Annual Music Fest this weekend. I wanted to, I'm not trying to be controversial, but I wanted to don a hat for the folks here today. This is a Norwalk hat. We had a football game last Friday night, and we had a... We've been on the right side of that one too often. I wanted to commend both teams and give them for the warriors. And then lastly, I, I see that she stepped out, but for those of you that don't know Bobette, she's, she's wonderful. I sincerely congratulate her on her upcoming retirement. She's gonna be difficult to replace. I don't know, she, she sort of helps me out from time to time by putting together packets, and I don't know, she holds my hand, I suppose, and it's helped a lot in the first eight months or so on the job. And so I really genuinely appreciate Bobette, and I wish her nothing but the best in her upcoming retirement. That's my report.
Thank you. Okay. I attended the Certified County Supervisors Education Committee, then the County Safety Committee, Iowa State Association of Counties Annual Conference. Attended to go to the County Housing Authority Meeting, County Joint 911 Service Board Executive Meeting, the Board of Supervisors Work Session Concerning the Courthouse and Jail, met with citizens concerning the courthouse and jail, attended the Warren County Freedom Rock and Veterans Memorial Dedication Ceremony on the Warren County, and attended the Local Emergency Food and Shelter Program Board Meeting. Also met with the Assistant County Attorney to discuss various legal county matters, and some of those matters, I see that the major city mayors are here today of Carlin, Norwalk, and Indianola. And they're here because we had on the agenda a discussion of bringing a five-member Board of Supervisors to Warren County. In discussion with our county attorney's office, I was advised to pull this discussion from the agenda. And I do hope that our mayors and our county major cities can address this issue, take this opportunity to bring it up during public comments since they are here. Also, just a quick note, that live streaming could not happen today due to an update of software, I was told by IT, and they were notified of this just before the meeting today. That's my report. And we have item fourteen, our next meeting date, September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, at six P.M., an evening meeting. And I would take a motion to, yes, oh, I'm so sorry, I skipped it right. Not a faux pas.
Public's coming up, I don't want to... It's just so nice.
So let's back up to item thirteen for public input, and the floor is now yours.
Madam Chair, distinguished board, drew our field, citizen, a car buyer, and mayor. As the chair just alleviated to, we are, the mayors and I, Indianola and Norwalk, are in favor of increasing the board size from three to five. And I, I think the evidence is right there when I've come to numerous meetings, watching you trying to communicate with each other, it's obvious that you have not had communications prior to the meeting. Otherwise, the, the conversations would be of a totally different concept than what they are. And it's clear to me and the other two mayors of why we need to go that way. In light of that, the other two mayors were also here today based on the fact that this was on the agenda. I checked last night myself at twenty-one hundred hours, nine o'clock, and it was on this agenda for that discussion to happen. We come here this morning, and it is not on the agenda, it's been pulled. And my question is, the normal citizens have to go to your website to see what's on your agenda, which is what I did. That was on your agenda. This morning, it was pulled, and I was told that it was sent out via email, and it was pulled in that email. Well, my question is, who does that email go to? It doesn't go to the citizens of the county for us to see what is gonna transpire at this meeting. So my question is, where does the email go to that changed the agenda? And second of all, if the agenda was changed, which according to my, what I looked at, at fifteen hundred hours Friday, three o'clock, it was on the agenda at a quarter after fifteen fifteen, it was pulled off. So why wasn't the agenda board that's out there for the citizens to see on the website changed? I, I don't know, that's up to you, but that is a problem, obviously. People need to be able to go to that and see what's on the agenda. According to State Code three thirty-one, two oh three, it gives this board authority to address the size of the board. In other words, changing the size of the board from three to five. It also gives some other possibilities also via petition. My personal thought is, is it would be much better aesthetically to our citizens of the county, if the board would take it upon themselves, realize that there's an issue, and make that move for the board to happen from three to five. We could, in theory, put forth this petition. I, I have no doubt that we'd have enough people to sign that petition to make it happen. But here again, myself and the other two mayors believe it would be much better aesthetically for the board to take it upon themselves to do that. Chairwoman McIntyre also mentioned that there's a three to four percent population increase average annually, I guess, in the, in the county. I, I would state that that three to four percent probably is growth within the cities, not in the rural areas. So I, I, I don't think it's a fair concept for the board, at least one, to state she would like to hear, or they would like to hear, from the citizens when, in theory, the populations are mostly in the towns. I, I'm not throwing out the rural areas by any means. There, there certainly is an average, or I believe, according to my numbers, about fifteen to sixteen thousand in the rural areas, not in the cities. But nonetheless, going back to the board size, if this board would increase, it would also give the opportunity to state how that would increase. There are three options given by the state. One of the options is, by my definition, the best one. And that is the fact that the county population would be divided into equal parts, and if the board went to five, each equal district, based on population, would have a supervisor on this board. I, I think this is long overdue and coming, and I, I believe the citizens, I believe, my belief is, the citizens of this county would love to see this board go to five. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Having served on the district in committee for the last two terms. It is divided by population. The city of Norwalk has grown to the point that they are, we have two supervisors. That night, the city of Indianola would have to be split, and they would have two, and the remaining of the county would have one. Unless your plan has changed, we are not allowed at large, like supervisor, or like school boards and city councils. We don't have that option. So we want to be careful how you're looking at this. It is still going to be two, be two from Indianola, two from Norwalk, and the remainder of the county will fall within that unless your plans change. If they change to Plan One, you will have a large replacement. Changes to Plan Two, you have to live in the district, but everyone votes. We are under Plan Three at present time.
Thank you.
It's a little different. Keep moving, I guess. I gotta read, I can't see or read anymore. Just gonna start, I would like to thank the supervisor, Margaret Grace, for the work. He started with his, did the help for the refill plaza streets. He started to repair the refill parkway storm drain, problem like it, a drainage ditch which it never had. He got that started, he put it in. It's been that storm drain that was plugged for years, and that's what he used, going with that storm drain at the bottom, on his way up, so he could get to that where it was plugged. He wouldn't have been able to fix the caged-in pipe if it could have been voted in for another term. He also repaired the sidewalk out of his own pocket on Palmeo Parkway. He was there to help not stop the repairs in the refill plaza. But the all-knowing ignorant voters standing in the back, and then the storm drain had to fight again. This area of homes was built and approved by Warren County years before. They were built with no men maiming sand or sewer pipes, no storm drains, not even a drainage ditch for the water. I had complained to the councils before Margaret Grace, and he, he started trying to stop it. Very poor construction of this area in the sixties. Also means that the street that hooks up to the storm drains is very poorly built. Got the pipe fixed, storm drain fixed, street's still not fixed. Now that street is spitting away from the driveways, and the water shoots up through the holes in metal of the concrete, mudjacking done many years ago for trying to stop it. I was told by a worker a year ago, he could work out the refill plaza until he retired, and he had a full-time job all the time. That's what they know. The water is still flowing on Gappy Parkway Creek every day of the year. At least, these people have to live in water in their yards, in their basements, three hundred and sixty-five days of the year. Of course, winter time, it changes over to snow and ice. Now, how's the money spent, paid out for the weight of the, weight of the science? I'm wondering about that. How so, no property tax, and refill plaza will ever go back to us for help? That money could have been gone onto one of those small repairs, because the science paid for this place, stayed without the town. And thanks for the, the repair of the science. That just started, you're admitting that the streets are getting bad, and these, but now we gotta try to make the sciences appear by repairing the streets. So we'll have to see. We can get hold of Rosie. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Troy Mass, work manager of 406, he's working the place, a resident here in town. I just wanted to thank the engineers department for helping out Lacona. Most of you know the tornado that happened down there. Happened at five-thirty in the morning. Two tornadoes went through, and there were one on the, over the west side and one on the south. They would emerge together, Lacona would not be here. It was that big of a system. And it popped up, and it was one of those things that came up really fast. So I made a phone call to the engineer and said, this is not gonna be good. Can you come down and help open some, at least one way through some of the streets? Most of the streets are blocked with a lot of foliage from the trees and debris, and it wasn't a second thought that I was gonna come down and help. So wanted to make sure that we thanked the engineers department, you guys were letting do that, which he was talking about the overtime and vacation time and all, how that works. I'm sure that was involved with some of that operation. By eleven o'clock, I remember the day was on the twentieth, by eleven o'clock that morning, they had most of the road, that would save percent of the roads, at least one way passable, to just move the trees over. Then the big boys came with the big trucks for the power, so you get that cut and move so that we can move more debris. And then they worked for two more days to get that open so that Lacona could still have their Lacona Fest. And so the mayor, I know is not here today, but I can speak for them, and it was really appreciated. No, we didn't get any federal money for a small storm like that, or any state money, but we were able to do it with the kind of assets that we had. So, thanks.
Thank you, George.
Good morning. I'm Mary Shields, and I wanted to go back to the subject of the courthouse. And I know this has really been controversial, it's emotional, but when I look at this project, I mean, it's really an issue of function versus cost versus timing. And you can give me two of those, but you can't always get three. And I don't envy your position because it's hard to run these projects. I've been a project manager for a major corporation for over three years, and they never work like you think they're gonna work. But what I would encourage you to do is take the emotion out of it and decide how we get the functionality we need, so we have it not only today, but in the future. Because we don't want to see another bond in twenty, thirty years. I mean, there might be small ones, but not a major one. And, you know, these costs are very confusing. You know, I went through the newspaper articles, I tried to figure out what was happening, and I came up with a range of the costs being off anywhere from nineteen to thirty-two percent from the first bond. That is a huge swing. And because of that, I think there's a loss of confidence, at least by the taxpayers, because they don't understand at all. And that's a huge swing. So the reason I wanted to mention all this is I really think what we need is, one, find which is going to be the best solution, whether it's on the square or a green site. And I will say, I was for the square, but now I'm not so sure anymore. Because function is very important. And one thing I learned from being a project manager, I do global projects. People tend to forget you didn't leave a deadline. But what they don't forget is if you didn't bring the quality there and get it done right. So something to think about when you're trying to decide, do we have to try to fit into the current budget? Or do we want to come back to the taxpayers? And then the last thing I wanted to mention is communication. Because it's hard for us to understand which way is best and what are all the costs and all. But if it could get laid out so we could see why you came to this solution and what the costs are, it would make it a lot easier if, in the event, you're going to come back and ask for more money. So just some things to consider and, again, I want to thank you for your work and I'm glad I'm not sitting here for chair.
Thank you.
I'm going to approach this from a little bit of respect.
I hate your name.
Norm Wilson.
Your address. Your address.
Four hundred South Eighth Court, Indianola, forty-one. Uh, seems to me like, uh, things kind of working right now, I think. You got administration building, you got a court. Judges shouldn't dictate what you guys are going to do. It's up to you and I agree with you in your comment. One trial a month. And that requires a great big courthouse. So I think you've got yourself in a box right now. You tore down the courthouse and now the construction people know damn well they can get whatever money they want to get. So I think you need to step back and say, what are we going to put in this courthouse? Are we going to put all these administrative offices? Are you going to put a jail in the courthouse? What, what are you going to put in that courthouse? Seems to me like you've got a situation that works. I don't know of any other courthouse that's not on the town square. Is there one? Maybe, I don't know. Seems like it ought to be on the town square. And I think, uh, Chris, well, you're right. You better work within the budget you've got and think about where you're going to keep these offices. I mean, I can't see, it seems like everything's working. I know where everything's at now. Is all these buildings going in the courthouse? And all these offices? Do you own this building now? Are you paying money? Is it costing you money to operate? For a lack of a certain, you can do without a courthouse. So that kind of seems to be, oh, we ought to have a courthouse because we ought to have a courthouse. Is that the case? So I just, I just want you to think about administration, where the offices are at and where the contractors are coming from, because they're letting the court anything they want to go and you're going to have to pay it. Good.
Thank you.
My name's Tom Bauer. I'm at four hundred South Eighth Court, Unit Fifty-Six, Indianola. And I'd like to address, um, the superintendent, Mr. Yucalk, over here, about the green space. Who are going to pay? You're going to have to spend millions of dollars off for utilities, sewer, electrical and buy the land. The hands aren't cheap around Indianola, as you know. What are you going to do with, um, you got the free, you got the courthouse. That's free. You just, you tore up the square, put a bigger sewer system in to accommodate the new system. And, uh, I don't know. So what are you going to do with that sewer system you guys spent on the square? You put new sewer, tore up the streets. You got a big hole there now, so you're going to have to. Did you check out what the utility cost to put on the outskirts? We have to pay for it. I mean, a Warren County resident is going to have to pay for sewer and electrical, all that. I mean, so I don't know if you thought that. What is the land going to cost you? Have you checked the land price? Where it's going to go? The previous board had a land on the south side of Indianola and Carle Isle and Norwalk people rejected it because they said they had to drive through the city to go to the, to the jail. And you already got the court system out at West Edge. Why isn't that adequate enough? Do you have to have, why can't we just put a jail like Madison County, Apear County, got the Dale Supper? Why do we need a courtroom? Why do you put a jail on top floor when it floods? The inmates flood the floor and you got the same problem you had before. You got mold and all that water running down through all their buildings. Why would you need a jail? Why don't you put the jail in the basement? You can buy more of jails because the overflow on inmates. And, uh, so you put the jail in the basement, to me, that'd be adequate. You wouldn't break out through so many walls. So I don't know why you need, why don't you just put a jail up? You got the court. I know it's not adequate out at West Edge. Spent thousands of dollars for remodeling and, uh, so that's all I got to say. Thank you for letting me speak.
Just as a reminder, during public comment, questions posed to the supervisors are not going to be answered. And so it's not, it's the, we don't have answers or I don't want to respond to questions directly posed. I mean, but it would be inappropriate at this time.
Any others?
Okay, speak twice today. Uh, Sunday, Indianola, Sunday. Anyway, a woman due to the fact that went out by Farmer's Chapel. About waiting for a fowler and wanted to go by our other farm. Well, one hundred and sixty-eight is closed due to, um, Bridge over Butcher Creek, which I understood that. And I came over to inbound, but it's one hundred and eighty. The south end of Offal Folsom where I got on seemed to be pretty decent. And that was because they're evidently building a pond back in there off from the property. But then I was committed. It was practically impassable. It was impassable and it was to the point I couldn't back up because I couldn't see. It was terrible ruts. I could not do a three-point turn. It was a whitened. And I would, no, I probably won't be able to again until something is done. This is something that the farmers are going to be using quite. Pretty about end of September, first part of October. They have crops back in there. They can't get a combine, a tractor or anything else. So my request is that the engineer may want to start working on these B roads. Since we are coming into harvest, there's not been anything done to them all year. Policy was when B roads came in, a number of years back, Mr. Sandy Penn had a policy that the B roads would be planted at least twice a year. They are not being taken care of. I don't know how they are on the rest of the county, but up in my area, they need to have some attention. And I'd appreciate it if, um, the engineer could hook it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing and hearing none, moving on to item fourteen, which is our next meeting date, September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen at six P.M. an evening meeting. I would take motion to adjourn.
Someone.
Second.
Show.
Hi.
Your cook?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.